Good evening, it's 5:30 on Tuesday, January 8th. This is the Select Board meeting. In attendance is Chairman Joe Didi, Vice Chairman Russ Fox, and Clerk Doug Mogulyn. And this is Mr. Steinhardt. And I'm gonna turn over the recorder to the Chairman.
Boy, nobody likes to touch that thing. Just fingerprints, Russ. They're only fingerprints.
Yeah, but...
I know, I know. It's no DNA, it's just my fingerprints. Alright, so it's 5:30. So, public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Please state your name and address for us, and we'd love to listen to you. You, sir? Anything?
Not today.
Nothing? I'm trying to drag this along a little bit, you know.
What's that?
Trying to drag the meeting along a little bit. I don't wanna be...
I'm trying to think of something else.
When Carl's here, we wanna go at least a half hour. You know, when he's not here, we can do six minutes. But, alright.
Thanks. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Yup. Alright, so we'll do a Payroll Warrant 1-9-1-5 dated 12/21/18 in the amount of $217,316.45. Reaffirm Payroll Warrant 1-9-1-6 dated 1/7/19 in the amount of $214,712.10. And we have another Payrolls Warrant 1-9-1-6B dated 12/31/18 in the amount of $184,955.50. And then we'll have regular session minutes for 12/18/18.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any executive, Mr. Steinhardt?
No.
Okay. Wonderful. We have to wait for 6:40 for you, or 5:40?
You're good.
So, it'll be a few minutes. I think there's coffee out in the hallway for you. Alright, so up first here is Grant. I don't see it here. Maybe it's sitting over here. Oh yeah, I got it right here. Chief Anderson. Congratulations. We are pleased to inform you that the Southwick Fire Department has been awarded $3,754 for student awareness of fire education, a safe grant, and $2,400 for senior safe grants. That's for you, Russ. Maybe you get a number on your mailbox? We look forward to working with you and your community on this public fire and life safety initiative. Well, that's wonderful.
We'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Absolutely. $6,154.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have to sign it, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, just initial it.
Just initial it. There you go. That's wonderful. We can cut their budget by how much, did you say? $6,000?
Four thousand.
Four thousand?
$6,154.
There you go. Savings already.
The budget or the proposed rate of increase?
Ah, we'll do the budget. Proposed rate of increase.
I'll hold this down here until the end.
Yeah, there is no increase.
Some people don't park between the lines.
Yeah, some people do. Alright, up next is the... Looks like the Southwick Rec Center's having another shame dig. It is the Southwick Family Sports Casino Night. And they're looking for all alcohol liquor license, and they're also looking to waive the police officer because it's a nonprofit. The date for this event is going to be January 26, 2019 at 4:00 PM. I need a motion to approve. I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention. Do you sign it when it's an abstention?
Nope.
No. There you go, sir. And we did waive the officer also.
Yup.
Great. And, you know, there's some interesting article behind that if you actually read it about... I guess we can gamble in Massachusetts.
Well, for a nonprofit.
Yeah, as a nonprofit.
Yeah, as long as you're registered and all that.
For two years and everything else, yeah.
Right.
But I don't think it's real money. It's fake money.
Of course, everything's fake. Yeah.
Like the Texas Hold'em, remember that? That was a big thing a few years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
Alright, DPW and Columbia Gas Natural Gas Loop Decision. Have you boys read this?
I did.
And? What's your thoughts? Are we after they would like a letter from the Select Board moving forward?
Yeah, just seeing that if you'd support them in their discussion with Columbia Gas in the development of their capital planning document to put in loop lines so that they could make the gas service more reliable where it is located.
Sure. I'll sign anything. I'm okay with that. As long as we're not on the hook for it. I don't see whoever doing it, but it's a great topic.
It is a good topic. There's only a six-inch main servicing, or eight-inch main servicing the town coming over the hill, right?
Right, it's a dead end.
But we do have the... There's a high... I don't know if it's a high-pressure line, or it's... Westfield's line runs on the rail trail too, right?
They have... The wholesale gas line goes through there. It intercepts it, and then there's a takeoff line on the rail trail that goes north into Westfield.
Correct. So, there's opportunities to connect to Westfield if we could... If Columbia could work something out with the GNE...
Right.
In... For emergency or whatever.
Like on Feeding Hills Road or something?
At Feeding Hills Road where the rail trail crosses or somewhere out...
Right.
Or even northerly that, you know...
Yeah.
I don't know where... How far gas goes up College Highway that we provide gas service in town.
Oh, on the street. Yeah, right, yeah.
And then how you would get from the here to there. But, anyway, it's worth a... You know, worth a letter and a discussion.
Alright, so we should say yes, you're supportive of it?
Because there are... You know, there also are some businesses and other entities in town that rely on...
Gas.
NAT gas-fired generators as backup electrical power. So if you were to lose the NAT gas to...
Yeah.
No bueno.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll tell them also to work with Westfield GNE on that rail trail intercept.
Or wherever. I mean, I'm not... They're more in charge of the logistics, but I was just thinking of where there would be NAT gas in the ground going by Southwick. That's easy to get to.
Including that.
Right.
You good, Russ?
Yeah. You know, I think if you're gonna request anything at Columbia Gas, now's the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, any municipality, I think is gonna get a response.
Of some kind. Okay. Authorization for the FY20 gasoline/diesel fuel buy orders.
Yup. Gasoline and diesel fuel, so the board needs to authorize... The Chairman and I will lock those in. We'll be doing it with Paul Schroeder from the Collaborative.
Now's the time.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, it's close enough for the poll here.
Those will be ready, Joe, by tomorrow.
Alright, I can sign them on Thursday.
Okay.
Alright, we'll get to that poll hearing next. Alright. So petition for joint or identical poll location. Springfield, Mass. dated November 13, 2018. The board of selectment on the Southwick. From Verizon, New England Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy. Request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors... Probably says guides, not guys. And other substantial and protective fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways. Hillside Road. Relocate one jointly-owned pole number T.9/E.9 to a point on the north... Northernly side of Hillside Road approximately 50 feet southern... Solely from the center line of Cole's Hill Road. Reason to relocate is jointly-owned pole on Hillside Road to accommodate a town construction project and to provide for distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for the permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables, together with anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protective fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed, marked Verizon Number 1A3FWOH dated November 8, 2018. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings that each of said petitions may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agreed to reserve space for one cross-arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Alright. So we need a motion to open?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sir, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Paul Reisenger. I'm a contractor for Verizon. I'm here about this, sir, but I know about the intersection and the pole being relocated, and I'd be absolutely delighted to answer any questions the town would probably have about that.
Okay. There's a picture there.
I think this is part of the improvements that our public works department...
For the drainage?
Yes. It's doing it for the drainage and redesigning the... I wanted to make it easier for traffic.
Yup. And we're moving our pole 22 feet away from the intersection.
Right, they're accommodating our...
Right.
Staying on Hillside.
Hillside, yup.
Okay.
Has that improved the drainage up there?
No.
Not at all?
Yeah, worse.
It's worse?
We're here for a poll hearing, sir.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Why are you poking the bears?
Well, we can make note of that.
Well, you know, it has something to do with the intersection.
Absolutely, it does. No, I know, I know.
I apologize. I should've gone through the chair.
No, it's wonderful, sir. But it hasn't improved it though, huh?
But it's fine.
I know it's had a lot of rain, and now it's taking all that water that would've been right there at the intersection into their dry wells. But the dry wells must not be big enough or whatever, because now we have more... We have more water running down the road than before.
Than ever before.
Than before. Yeah.
Alright, I made a note of that, Sue, to have DPW and Crestwood meet with you to go with that concern.
There were some... When they do the corner paving, we have a couple of issues about that also, so we'll meet with them.
Yup.
And now's the time.
You know, it's been really good meeting with them anyway. Dick has been good and Crestwood, so we'll just...
Yup. We're just gonna keep that separate from the poll.
Yeah, understood.
I apologize.
No, he's... It's all been right.
Yup. He's just doing the paperwork for the company requested by the town to relocate the pole.
Alright, anyone in the audience have any questions regarding for the poll hearing? Sir?
Are the poles similar in design to the poles that are there now? Or are they dramatically different in terms of height?
Are these the new cement ones that are 50 feet tall?
No, they're not.
Oh, they're not?
This one will be a 45-foot pole, replacing a 40-foot pole. It will be 5 feet tall.
5 feet tall, alright. Probably a little darker in color because the sun hasn't faded it yet.
No, that's probably...
Right. Realistically. And that extra 5 feet is so when we do our own cable business, we'll have the room on that pole.
Absolutely.
There you go. We've got another 6,000 poles to go.
Another 40 inches.
40 of them in town are okay.
Now that I'm a Hillside Row here...
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Forgot.
You're way around... You're not even close to that.
It's 5 feet... The new one's 5 feet higher.
It's more of a Rainville Road person.
Right.
Might be damaged? Okay, I didn't look at that pole.
Well, this is one that gets hit by the offensive effects.
It's well-used.
Yeah, it's a well-used pole.
That is one of the reasons why they relocated it.
Well, we're talking about the one next to it that we're just replacing.
Oh, okay.
But it's staying in the same location.
It's good it's there, otherwise it would hit that big tree now.
Right.
Right.
And the quality pole is as such, we can still staple our tag sale signs in it with no problem?
Missing persons.
We're having a poll here, sir.
I'm just... You know, just bringing it up.
Missing dogs?
We'll be able to do that whether the guy's...
Yeah, it wouldn't be me, of course. I don't live on Hillside, so I'm not selling or buying.
Hey, he didn't think you were gonna say that to him tonight.
I know he didn't. He's young. He's gotta get used to all these weird questions.
Yeah.
Alright, so nothing from the audience, or the audience has already discussed it. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a vote on...
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like you're looking for all of our signatures. Great, folks, thanks for coming out. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We're here every Tuesday night around 5:30. Stop in any time.
And Sue, you'll hear from somebody on the other end.
We need every other person to...
I'm still gonna come. I have nothing to complain about, but I'm going.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Yeah, give us your card, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Alright, guys. Thank you.
I'm starting to be able to read your signature.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
You've changed.
Ah, yeah. I'm slowing down. It's been tough. Been a rough week. Alright, Clerk, you can pass that down. That's all the stuff on the poll here, right?
Clerking.
You're clerking. Alright. Approval of the new voting machines per MGL Chapter 54, Section 34. I was unfortunately forgot about the day that they were all here to try, but I did stop at length with Michelle and go over everything.
Yeah, I think the first thing you wanna do is approve the appropriation through the FinCon Reserve. Then you've...
I'm just reading how my thing is here.
No, that's fine. See what they put in there.
I'll make that motion.
So the motions are here.
Yup. Oh, yes.
There's the motion, so you wanna do that one first, and then that one second.
I'll second the motion.
Let him read it first.
A motion is made by Mr. Fox, seconded by Mr. Mogulyn, to sign a reserve fund transfer of the purchase of four new voting machines and supplies in the amount of $22,500. So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That should be... Is it in the folder there, Joe? The blue one? No?
It's in your action.
Yeah, it's in my...
Sorry, can you just sign the one you have?
That's right here.
You want this back to the...
No, because you're gonna... This is the next vote.
Failing you as a clerk?
No, you're doing fine.
That's the one that's gonna...
You're fine. I just have everything.
Determine that you're turning the machines in, the other ones, or what you... Or they'll make them out.
Is that what we're doing with the old ones? We're turning them in?
Well, you have to...
Send them back to Russia.
You have to...
Well, actually, I was a third-world country, would love those.
The law requires you inform them, the vote... Your next vote is gonna specifically state the date you're gonna start using the new machines and the exact equipment.
Okay. So let's sign this.
So that's why we put together the next motion.
Alright, let's sign this one first.
Okay. And I did talk to the Chairman of the Finance Committee today.
Yup.
Yeah, they approved it last night.
They approved it last night.
Oh, I heard they approved all kinds of stuff last night.
They're on board.
Yes, they are. Okay, so the second one?
That's the motion.
A motion was made by Mr. Fox, seconded by Mr. Mogulyn, to acquire four new Dominion ICP image cast precinct election voting machines, model number PCOF320C, for three current precincts and a backup. These replace four AccuVote machines being taken offline, period. The machines will be in use for the May 2019 election, period. This will be per Mass General Laws, Chapter 40... Chapter 54, Section 34. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what do you want us to sign for that?
Um...
I have this from her.
No, that's fine. You don't have to... It's gonna be... We already have it in the minutes.
Okay.
Not paying good.
We're good. Alright. And they are taking the old ones for trade-in?
Right, because you had all the background briefing materials in your mail folder.
Yes.
Explain how the law works and how you have to give notices...
Yup.
To the appropriate state agency.
Understood.
It is a highly regulated issue.
Yes.
Yeah. There's also a lot of mindset going on with what happens during the elections.
Yeah. Okay. Let me just check the rest of this. The donations. How much is the donation, Ross?
Here. There you go.
I got all kinds of stuff. Alright, donation gift account. American Inn Residence. That is wonderful. Pretty amount of $4,500. Mildred Smith, $50. Scott Turner, $200. And I'm looking for a motion for all to go into the Fire Department gift account.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Very grateful to the American Inn Residence.
Unbelievable. That's wonderful.
That is. It's outstanding.
I'll be over there Thursday. Throw that over there. Review and adopt the FY20 budget schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
You've got it there.
We have the dates, right?
Yup. The dates, Joe. Those are the dates that...
That we looked at before, yeah.
Yup.
So you're fine with that. And what do you... While we're on the subject, Capcom?
Yeah, what...
What are we thinking?
Um, well...
Don't usually do it sometime in between this, or...
Yeah, usually those are like Thursdays, Joe, so...
Yup, I have the dates here in front of me.
We could probably do one of those, um... Let's see, because this is gonna be over here, so we could probably do one of those at the 7th and the 21st.
Alright.
And then the 2nd, and then the 7th of March. So it'll be like those three days.
7, 21st, and then the 7th. Okay.
Alright. What do you... Are you okay with those?
Any Thursday, whatever. Alright. So you can have that.
Yeah.
Let's check it off.
Okay, good.
And you guys are good with the other dates? Alright, PVPC invoice number 25 dated 1/3/19 in the amount of $2,429.49.
So moved.
So second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question?
Well, normally we don't take any questions from the audience, but we'll allow it tonight, sir. Go ahead.
The 24/29, is that the one annual payment we make through PVPC?
Nope, that is...
This is $2,429.49, and it's an invoice that is part of the...
Veteran Street.
Implementation of a community on the block.
Okay. So it's not related to that flat amount that we pay them each year, and we have like a slush fund from them that we supposedly can go use on their services?
I think he's talking about our contribution that we make annually.
Through the assessment?
Right.
The cherry sheet assessment?
Right. But this, David, is...
Yeah.
Mr. Didi worked on it. Right. A certain project.
Yeah.
And we'll get invoices until the project is completely signed off and audited and reviewed.
They're very, very good at billing us.
And down to the...
Phone calls, yes.
Down to the posting standard.
And it's a great deal still.
Right, for direct and direct.
Yeah.
But what we get is a tremendous benefit. I mean, that project that Mr. Didi worked on, Veteran Street, tremendous.
The Senior Van, the Senior Van here.
Food Bank.
Yeah.
Additional food bank.
The Food Bank Van, Veteran Street, and then some rehab of housing through Southwick and Granville. And they did such a great job, they came back with about $100,000 left over.
Wow.
Which then purchased our seniors a new bus, which we would not have done for at least eight years.
Right.
And then some more monies went back to the food pantry, and that's pretty much cleaned up now.
Yeah.
In fact, Jim is going to be coming in at your February 5 meeting for a public hearing to discuss elements of structuring the next grant application.
The next grant, yeah.
And again, this is federal fiscal year, so it's always a year behind when we actually get the money and start it. But going back to your question, there is an annual cherry sheet amount that's several thousand dollars, and that's by per capita. And that goes on to our cherry sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Update on the 250th Anniversary Meeting.
I think everything is going pretty good. Chairman Putnam is, I guess, in the final stages of logos and banners and budgets. So now it's a question of raising additional funds to cover as many activities as possible, and, you know, we're gonna do it just like Westfield did it. We got a wish list, and we'll put the budget together and see what we come up for funding, and there we go.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get that cake.
I told the Chairman...
Oh, the one on the green that...
I told the Chairman about you stealing the cake, yes.
I think at night...
Oh, you mean you wanna borrow from him?
Well, they can do it when it's over. I mean, realistically, and we're far enough away that maybe we can make a deal. Maybe we'll have to take it down and maybe borrow that cake.
Remove 100 candles.
Eh, I'd known to do a few things.
A hundred candles, yeah.
Well, you know that where you pay-
We'd get it, it would be good for a hundred years.
No, but, but that thing where they smash a car for ten bucks to firemen?
Right.
Okay, there's a hundred extra candles, right?
Yeah.
Ten bucks of whack.
Oh, absolutely.
You know?
Can't we just unscrew the bulb so we're good for a hundred years?
Aw, come on, Doug.
Two fifty-one.
Can't we smash 'em, shoot 'em out?
This sounds like a Y-two cake.
We could sponsor- actually, there was a nice post on Facebook today. Someone took a picture of the church in the background with the wires and said, "Didn't we see this in Back to the Future?"
Yeah.
And, and it literally was cute enough where I said, "You know what? Yeah." That, you know, the-
It did look like it.
It did look like that, yeah. Didn't see Marty around, but, uh-
Wasn't that two thousand fifteen was that movie?
Right, right.
Three years past it. Where's the flying cars?
Well, have you been on this road lately?
Hmm.
They're pretty close. And I understand they are working on a float. Uh, I got the, the chairman met with me up at the Blanford Ski. He was up there-
Yeah.
Enjoying the ski slopes.
There you go.
And I mentioned that the gentleman that was in front of us tonight, actually, that's what I thought he was for.
He was, uh, he's got him on board, and very talented-
Extremely talented.
Individual.
Yeah.
You know, that-
Did a lot of the Biggie's hundredth anniversary.
Right, so we're very lucky to have that kind of-
Were you with Harry, Jim? What do you say, the chairman of that other committee?
Uh, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Oh, that chairman, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Putnam was-
Yeah, I thought you meant the other, the chairman of the other one.
Yeah, I probably get more done in the dark in Westfield than I will in the daylight, so.
Russ and I know the other chairman.
Yeah, no, I'm aware. So, good times. Uh, Westfield G and E Fiber Optics.
Yeah, you had met with him a couple of months ago.
Apparently got a nice poll coming in now, so that's one poll done.
A thousand ago.
And you, you did at some point say that you would probably carry it under old business, so, whether you were gonna put a committee together.
Would love to put a committee together.
Excellent idea.
It can't hurt to have frank discussion a little more about this.
Is, but I think the committee should be well-rounded because-
I'm trying to lose weight, Russ, but yes.
But I mean, there's, I know, it sounds very good.
No, no, but-
And I know a lot of people want it, but, but it's a tremendous dollar amount, you know?
Yeah.
So, I think the committee should definitely have people that are gonna express pros and cons and-
Yeah.
An open mind.
Yeah, it's not an easy hurdle.
No.
By no means.
No.
No, and there's an outlay.
A huge outlay.
Because of, you know, the creation of the chapter, I suppose what they, what they could do is when you finally do put a committee in place, they could talk to communities that have already gone through this process, like Wilbraham.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. And the Hilltowns are halfway through what they say, you know, and I'm sure it's no easy task.
Right, but I think some of what, some of their expenses are being subsidized through that mass broadband-
Understood, yeah.
Initiative, and this isn't the case here.
No, this wouldn't be, right.
So that's why it may be more or less how Wilbraham undertook it.
Correct.
That didn't have an NBI subsidy. But it is something that you had them in far, and you had mentioned that you wanted to think about it, so.
Definitely some kind of exploratory committee.
An ad hoc to review.
Yeah, come backward.
I mean, I know right now you got a couple, you know, you got the two-fiftieth going with an ad hoc, and then you got the open space with an ad hoc, so you've got a, you've got a bunch of alum season ad hoc, you got a bunch of alum, you know, ad hocks sitting out there right now.
What's one more? If we can find anyone to even do it, you know, that's gonna be the biggest issue, so.
The fellow who bought my property is a network consultant for Whip City Fiber. And he is chomping at the bit to see them bring it down into the Southwick Country Club location, so he can get it pushed across the street.
Well, and it's interesting, it's not that simple, as we found out.
He's a resident.
He's not living in the house yet, but he plans to. And he would certainly be an authority in terms of the, the network and what it involves. He's been working with the Hilltowns already.
Were those the same guys that came into our meeting?
No.
Now, he hasn't participated in any meetings here in town yet.
Okay.
But I've been sending you some clippings as I see them from different news articles about-
Oh, yeah.
Different communities that are going through it right now, and there's been divergent results, whether we want it, we don't want it, and then if they do want it, how they do it. One of them opted to have Comcast do it.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yep.
Comcast was way less expensive than Whip City Fiber.
Huh. I wouldn't have thought that, but, but with you-
Comcast is gonna get it back in spades, right?
Right.
Because the rates, right? So they, they opted to buy low, you know, and pay dearly later. And, right, that's their town meeting, but their town meeting voted that way, huh?
Right, the own end, those are the own, the rates.
Right, they're gonna be paying what we're paying for cable and internet here in Southwick.
Right.
And, you know, but it's interesting, because there's-
It tends quicker, so.
And then others have had Whip City do the design, have somebody do the build, others have had Whip City do the build and someone else's design, and then others have had others come in and do both. So it's, there's all facets on it, depending on how the community votes and-
Right.
Perceives the value.
Their local community and how they've planned it, their NBI money, their, their shares from the state, and how much they wanna bond for the balance.
Right. Interesting.
So, I mean, you don't need to make a decision tight, you just need to be thinking about it.
No, I would love to put something together in, because it's gonna take six months for someone to come back with some kind of theories of what the town may or may not want.
Easily.
Yeah, easily, yeah. Yeah, no doubt. You know, and I'm assuming they're all gonna say, "Yes, oh, they'd love it, nobody wants to pay for it."
Well, that's, that's what I-
I, I see that coming in a heartbeat.
I, I, when we started, when they started throwing out some figures-
I call it sewers. Just, you know, it's a great idea until you give them-
Airborne sewers?
Well, it's no, it's not gonna be any different.
No, it's no different.
It just, you know, they want, "On my street, but how am I, whoa, hold on, hold on." You know, because they're all gonna pay for it, right, whether they want it or not in the end. If, if we decide to do that, you're not gonna go pass someone's house and he's not, we're all gonna pay for it. So we're all gonna use it.
Depends how you do it, right?
You have to buy the poles.
We can lease a piece of that pole.
Right, right, because of capital cost there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, 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 it's not going anywhere.
But that might be the, you know, looking at how it went down in some of the other towns, other towns, the, the provider took on that responsibility, right? So the town threw their municipal light board or whatever you have to form in order to do it, basically contracted out the whole thing and said, "Look, we're not gonna take any of the profit from this either. This is all you. We just did this to facilitate, to give us the ability to contract to put stuff on poles in town."
Right.
That's the mechanism you have to have to have.
Just a pastor administrative capacity.
But we're done, right? So you, you go out and market and get subscribers and so on and so forth, and if you make money, God bless you. If you don't, oops. Right, that's part of it. But, you know, and, and that's how the G and E did it, right? They weren't sure, so they did a small-
Small test.
Segment first, and then to see what the buy rate was, or the take rate they call it, and then went from there. You know, Russ had a great point, too, is part of the process is you can't just let them come down College Highway-
Right.
And be done, right, and go, "Okay, we did the easy one."
That's what Continental, when they first started, we negotiated with them, and of course, they just wanted to-
Sure.
Make money.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And we said, "No, we're a town. We're either taking everybody or, or nobody," you know? And that was a negotiated, and it, it worked out.
That was with Marty Schuler.
Right.
And where a community, where a neighborhood couldn't be served by the lines, they had to get the dish. They had to give them a dish.
Really?
They don't do that anymore, but they had to do that.
No, no, but yeah.
But we, you know, we, there was some give and take. I mean, we did have, let them charge more for houses way, way up on a mountaintop, you know, because that was only fair.
Yep, understood. Or, or go up so many feet, and then the other person had to pay sure costs for the rest of their money. Put a pole up. Do you have poles along yours?
No, all our stuff was underground. It was done before the cable was in town, so there's no cable up there in three lane.
No, no cable? Not even through the underground lines?
No.
Couldn't pull up?
It was before cable. It was seventy-four.
Yeah, whatever's in that pole is in that pole, yeah.
You can't pull it along electric. It's gotta be a separate conduit.
If he had extra, extra conduit capacity with pole lines in it.
Right, right. But they don't want you to put low voltage next to high voltage. They frown on that kind of thing.
It doesn't work well.
So, anyway, that's, that's the discussion.
Yeah, we'll think about it for the future.
Well, I think Mr. Didi's right. We'll, we'll begin the process of forming a committee. I mean, we don't have to do it this month, but, but-
But we should-
But set a date by spring to have a committee formed.
Do we, should we do a posting or something that we're looking for people to be on it?
Yep.
Well, not yet. Usually in spring.
I, I thought, you know, when we get to the town meeting, that would be a good time. We're through our budget process and, and-
Yeah, they're a lively bunch. That'd be a great, great conversation.
I'm, I'm optimistic that the open space will be done by then.
True, right.
Well, the other question, too, is whether or not at that point when you're done with town meeting, you would like to have maybe someone from Wilbraham come over that handled that process for them.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That way, that way you're hearing it along with the prospective members of the committee.
Just like when we met with the president of the three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Westfield. Might as well, no need to reinvent the wheel. They had a lot of good suggestions, and we took them.
Yeah. True.
All right, we beat this dead horse.
Yeah, that's good. All right. What else do we have under old business? I met with, um, these folks. I'm so good with paperwork today. That's the letter that they wanna send out. I told them they could add my name to it. It's basically the Lake Management Committee looking for the eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the treatment. And they were gonna send that to, yeah, he doesn't need it. They were sending that to, uh, well, of course, Mr. Hummerson and Mr. Baldiga. And they're reaching out to, uh-
Congressman Neal.
Don't start. Don't even start. I got a bet going on that one. Our past, uh, who did Don's take seat from?
It was Mike Knapp.
Mike Knapp.
So Mike Knapp was really instrumental in dredging years ago when he was up there, so they're gonna actually reach out to Mike first to see if we need to tweak this.
Suggestions.
And suggestions of where it really should get mailed to, so it doesn't just end up on a desk. Um, and go from there, so.
Well, while we're discussing that-
Yeah.
Because it is old business.
Yeah.
And there seems to be some, when we talk about community preservation money-
Yeah.
There seemed to have been some sort of back and forth of the possibility of funds might be available for an alum treatment, because it's not a, a repair.
Right.
It's, it's more of a, it's, it's really saving a lake, you know?
And I did bring that up.
Well, it's not a repair, it's a rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
That's the criteria. Repairs are not eligible under-
Right, right.
So it's not a repair.
Rehab's are.
So I'm wondering, you know, and I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, but if we could authorize that gentleman to try to ascertain whether or not we could use funds-
For that.
For that. Because, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it, if, if you don't take this process, a lake could die.
Right.
And that means you're, you're, you've ruined, obviously, the benefits of Congammon Lake.
Yeah.
Which, which would affect the values of properties-
Yeah.
Which would reduce the source of income to the town itself.
Yes. Yeah, they had big eyes tonight because they accidentally, or, well, you know me, I like to hang myself, so I did mention if the, the land acquisition didn't go through, I, I basically said, you know, "There's that million dollars sitting there out of the CPC." And I said, you know, "Me, as one person of a board, has no problem if that eight-fifty would work out of that chunk to do what we just said." You know, and I, I got the big eyes because, of course, I, I get it, everyone wants to see that thing go through. But I just basically said, "Hey, these are the other options, if it's workable, you know, with funding," and, you know. That was a whole other discussion.
Yeah, I mean-
But, yeah, I'm with you, yeah, exactly.
You can go through this.
Yeah, how do you wanna bounce the ball?
What, what do you save first?
Right.
Well, the elephant in the room is if, if something were to happen on the lake, that million dollars is slightly overvalued for, um, non-lakefront property.
Correct, like that.
Right? I mean, if, if you were to lose the lake, why would we order to acquire the shoreline?
Why do we leave that shoreline?
Right, and that's a problem. There, there was two, as I recall, and, and that's a great point, is we could look at that to see if that is an eligible expense. Because the other thing that was, we talked about, was that our last meeting?
Dredging or?
Was to, if the permitting for the dredging was eligible for funding under the CPC.
That hadn't been determined yet either.
I think we, yeah, I, I might have been mistaken in our last meeting and said that we had asked and gotten an answer on that, and I thought that the board at the time, the CPC, wasn't interested very much, because they were concerned that they, they would have a negative outcome after spending money and not get the permitting.
That's true.
So, I don't know that they ever asked the actual question as, "Can you, regardless of the outcome, can you use CPC funding for the permitting process?"
Right.
So that, that process, you know, might be, that might be one good double question to ask-
Right.
The CPC itself or the, the, the authority on the CPA.
Yes, there's a certain attorney with the Massachusetts Department of Revenue who is the deciding person on those issues.
Correct, but that might be a great question to ask them, you know, a two-parter, you know?
Well, plus, because Bond Council would need to know, um, from the engineer doing the project, what the lifespan is of the product going in the water.
We even talk about bonding.
You know, whatever, just, it's just different.
Right, I'm just saying, forget about funding the dredging part yet, because that's down the road. But just the actual permitting cost, because there's, it's, it's very expensive.
Right, well, just the dollar cost of the project would not lend itself to money coming out of the-
Correct.
The appropriation and what you have there now or next year.
No, correct.
But the, um, and not to confuse the two, but the alum treatment, whether that would be a CPC-eligible rehabilitation is one.
That can be found out.
That, well, that, that when you-
But the board has to, someone's gonna okay that question to be asked.
Motion for, to authorize the chair to ask those two questions.
Right.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye. Can you ask those two questions?
The dredging and the-
To have the CALA address.
And the alum.
Throw a curve at me, I was confused there for a while.
That was a ground ball.
You know?
Sorry. It's a well-oiled machine up here.
And while we're on that subject, um, we need to think about, within the next month or so, getting the Board of Health in here, because I believe Mr. Fitzgerald has given them a timeline of when he may be retiring. So we would love to sit down and see what their thoughts are about replacing Mr. Fitzgerald, or what our thoughts are about where we wanna see Board of Health in the future, because that is coming up, uh, through September first date out.
Yeah. I know you've discussed that sometimes at the budget hearings, because that's their independent authority.
Well, there you go, we have budget hearings coming up anyways. Yep, that's perfect.
As an elected board, they go to the finance committee.
And may I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, absolutely, I love suggestions.
That Mr. Mokel and I are gonna be attending the Mass Municipal Conference.
Oh, you are, that's right.
And we'll have-
What is that?
Next week.
Next week.
And we'll have an opportunity to talk to other, other communities-
Yeah.
Smaller communities, and to see how they handle it, you know, because some, I'm, I'm told, take a regional approach.
I, I, I've stressed the regional approach for the last four years. Um, I don't know how far out we can go in regions, but yes, I'd love for you to spearhead that while you're out there, sir.
Okay.
In between your six-thirty to eight-thirty cocktail hour. If you have time, that would be wonderful. Just, because that's coming sooner than we think.
Right.
You know, you're gonna blink and it's gonna be here, especially with the budget season coming up, because they're gonna set a cross with us and try to educate us on things we apparently don't know. So I'd rather nip that in the bud right away.
You got it.
For my friends upstairs. Just stay quiet, that's fine. Let me, let me dig the holes.
Why wink when you can nod?
Yeah. Except the tape recorder hears you say that, but that's all right. All right, anything else under old business? Do you have a meeting coming up? Or a, a get-together on Thursday? No? Okay. I thought we did. I'm sorry. That's cool. Uh, what else we have? New business. Award of Old Library Sale and Authorization for PNS Agreement, Purchase and Sales Agreement.
That's right.
What did the old attorney tell us?
Town Attorney has given the green light on it. All the documents that were submitted with the RFP response-
Yeah.
Uh, were acceptable to the town attorney.
Forgot.
So you would need to obviously go to the next step, which would be to award the sale and authorize the purchase and sales agreement to be drafted by town council, and then it would be given to Scott's council, and then they would work out an agreement for the parties to execute. And town meeting has already authorized you to go ahead with this.
Okay.
And of course, David would be, and his board would be partnering with them in terms of the reviews of the, of the historical preservation restriction issues. Everybody is well-aware of it, having been at the site, walking through, talking with each other, it's, there's no- Everything's on the table, there's no, you know, issues here that haven't been discussed.
Okay. I had plenty of issues that came up after the fact, maybe because the damn press wrote a story about it, but my phone rang pretty good, and people were rather upset that-
I didn't get any phone calls.
Yeah, I don't know, that's funny how that works. Um, rather upset about maybe it was a low price, and, you know, we could just forget those prices, and these new ones would come in, and I nicely explained that this has been a two-year process.
I had a discussion with some of the same people. They're fine now.
Yeah, that's good, because I wasn't changing-
No.
My mind anyways.
No, it's, it's, it's good, there's, there's a-
It's just disappointing, because everyone and their brother had an option to put a bid in on this project, and, you know, we got one, which is fine. They did it the right way.
Yep, it's fine. The outside auditor said it, it, it's, if the board is comfortable with one bid, then it's fine.
Okay.
So the auditors looked at it, the town attorneys looked at it, you know, all the documents were submitted as required.
No, it's fine. And the quicker we get it back on the tax rolls, the better off we are anyways.
Not only that, we can stop paying-
When's the insurance due, yeah?
Um, it's gonna be due again during the summer.
Oh, perfect.
So this would allow us to not have to renew Lloyds of London, and you can also put it back on the tax roll, and-
Right.
And all the other expenses that Mr. Johnson and his staff have, alarms.
Occurred every time we turn around.
Right, all of those recurring costs won't be there anymore.
All right, so I need a motion to approve.
So will.
I gladly second it. I wanna congratulate the board, uh, the chair, and Carl for, I mean, we, and I know when Russ was the chair, he put his foot down and said, "We're not gonna kick this can down the road anymore," and, you know, it took a little while, because-
He was on the board a long time saying that, though, wasn't he? How many years did he even say him that?
Well, it was during my first term, so it was less than five years.
Thank you, Mr. Mokel.
So it was fairly recent.
I mean, I didn't run on my campaign saying you weren't gonna kick it down the road.
He put his foot down and said, "Look, we're not gonna kick this can down the road anymore."
Right.
I think that was actually his words, right, and-
Then he showed up a wear.
We went to go get leased, you know, we've got in front of town meeting to get a building to lease it. We partnered with the Historical-
Yep.
Commission, who's been, you know, a willing partner in all of this to get this done, and then when we didn't get the right answers on the lease, we decided, we, again, went back to our partner and said, "We're, we need to sell it. Okay, here's a, a way we can do that and preserve the character of the building." And everybody worked together. We had multiple open houses. Everybody had ample opportunity to come in and do their thing.
And they actually did, I mean-
And we had one person do it, and there was plenty of people coming through there. I was there-
Yeah.
You know, for a bit. I did see a bunch of people come through. You know, one person followed through and did everything you're supposed to do, and it was no secret. It was, there was signs out front, it was, you know, everything else. So I gladly second the motion to move this, to stop kicking the can.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so get that ball rolling, Mr. Steiner.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think we can just ground him, send him to the library. Go to the library.
This is the guy. You should get his phone number. You're gonna be, go out and chat with him once in a while, maybe even go to one of their board meetings.
Sure, sure.
And I'll, and I'll dig up my old, original, green library card.
Actually, I found some documents. She's gonna have a book out.
I knew I should have ripped that green-
And by the way, the late fees are fifteen grand.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, twelve thousand. I just wanted to say, um, you know, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I, I, I am pleased and honored, uh, and I think we can preserve that building. Uh, I I I am pleased and honored, and I think we can preserve that building. I think I've gotten really excited over, uh, over it over the past two, two weeks. And I'm looking forward to digging in and getting that building up to what it should be and 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 using it as an office. I've had multiple phone calls on it, formal requests, offers, et cetera, and informal. Uh, and, but I think this current plan is a state of course, I'd love to have it as a, as our office. I think it'd be great, right, Main Street, Southwick, beautiful building, and I think we can do a lot with it.
I mean, I got calls for a jeweler. I had, and then someone was thinking about maybe a liquor store there, that would never work for retail liquor.
Yeah, parking's out there.
Because the parking, there would never be a parking.
Yeah, and we have one right across the street.
Requests from, from, from attorneys to realtors.
Everyone we talked about, that should have been looking at.
Exactly, they said it would be a dream place for that, right?
I think, you know, I think our office, we truly do have a need for it.
Well, you, you scape that yard just right with your waterfalls and all the stuff that you do in your industry. And now you got a showpiece in the center of town that shows your wares. I mean, you can't, you can't buy it, well, you did buy it, but you can't buy it.
Well, the other boards and committees you've dealt with and departments on the repurposing of the other buildings that you bought and turned around. That spoke very highly of your ability to to take properties and turn them around and repurpose them.
That's great, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I think we'll let you down on this one, get some great ideas. Uh, I started interviewing, I don't wanna take up anybody's time, but we started interviewing people to do some, do some work with us on on some of the rehab, some of the woodwork, somebody who has experience doing it, talking to different architects. And then, of course, the mechanicals, wanna make sure the bone, while we know the bones are good, we wanna make sure the mechanicals are right there, too. So just initially, just started talking with folks, interviewing.
That won't be a problem, you don't have any mechanicals.
Yeah, we got a furnace. They say the sewer line's still good, though.
There was a question on that, the sewer, it is connected to the.
Yeah, we, I called when we were in that building and I was told you have a sewer.
Perfect.
You're connected.
DPW would be the guys you talk to, Dick and us.
I don't think we paid the fee and it's up to thirty-two thousand now for the sewer line.
The Betterman charge.
And the kind of.
But yeah, other than that.
He didn't need that in a small print.
He didn't need the small print, yeah.
All right, small print.
It's not in there. It's not in there.
But yeah, other than that, yeah, you're good to go.
Well, we gotta try, we gotta try, all right?
Your overdue fine just went up again.
Yeah.
I I would like to, I would like to request that the landscapers stay on and continue mowing and.
Well, that's, that was interesting, Mr. Johnson and I were doing the budget for next year and I said.
We'll be sliding that out.
Should we be letting that person know? I said, well, it's the same person buying, I'm not too concerned about it.
Wonderful.
Good.
Good luck.
Thank you, boss, congratulations.
And we were wondering where we were gonna put that cake from Westfield.
Oh, it's going right over there.
That that would take the entire parking lot.
Yeah, it happens. That purchase and sale may take a year and a half.